Thank you, everyone. I'd like to call the meaning, our Board of Education Business Meeting, for Thursday, August 10th, 2023, to order. I'd like to motion to excuse Mr. Robbie Eaton.
Say it again.
Mrs. Enriquez?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Longness?
Yes. Sorry, yes. We're all, we're all here now.
Thank you, everybody.
Cracked, like, off the good stuff. It's gonna be okay.
So, I am looking for a motion to adopt the-
Will we adopt the agenda as presented?
Say it. All right. We're ready now. Yes. Dr. Thomas?
Absolutely.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Longness?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We will move on to 1.04, our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where its stand is, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, right. I'd like to report that, um, sorry, report that the Board of Education met and closed session on June 6th and June 8th for the purpose of a discussion of personnel agenda items. And then we will move on to 1.06. Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. So, I'd like to report that the Board of Education met and closed session on July 13th, 2023, for the purpose of a discussion of personnel agenda items. Now, now we will move on to 1.06, to public comments. The Board invited citizens, staff, and students to attend meetings in order to become better acquainted with the school, so that the Board may have a formal opportunity to hear concerns, requests, and suggestions of members of the Ritter School community. Public comments are normally scheduled at all regular business Board of Education meetings. No more than 30 minutes are generally allotted for public comments. And we do have one individual committee tonight for a public comments. Each person will be allowed a maximum of five minutes for his or her presentation. And we'd like to ask Ms. Bradford, Kay Bradford, to come forward.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
I happen to be the parent of a student that was redistricted this year. And I have some concerns regarding the way that this went for our redistricted students, or at least in my opinion. I've been in the district, this is the start of our eighth, our eighth year in the district. And in my opinion, the communication between the district and their parents has gotten instead of the worst, instead of better. There's a lot of communication about things that don't necessarily affect our students. Tons of information about that, and things that are coming up and, and everything. But then, when there are things that affect students and parents and families, the communication is so few and far between that there's not a lot of information out there. We were affected by the redistricting. And until I made a phone call to Ritter Middle, I had no idea what to expect, or when to expect any type of communication. I was met with some major pushback when I made that phone call. Kaylee's never been too Ritter Middle, other than to be to the gifted area and to the cafeteria. So my concern was she was going to get to school on Monday, the 21st, and she would have no idea where to go. So I asked if she was going to be allowed to come on the 17th, and was met with an absolute no, which now has been changed and communicated with us, which is great, that makes me feel better as a parent. I also asked when we could expect middle school schedules for our students, and I was told that it would be after August the 17th. We all know that's certainly one business day before school starts on the 21st, which creates a lot of anxiety in our students. I'm very active with the Junior Husky Cheer Squad, and I know a lot of those girls are very anxious about when they're gonna get their schedules. Is it going to be, you know, when are they gonna get those schedules? And they talk about that a lot. And with our students, I really wonder if it doesn't create a lot of anxiety in them because they're not getting that information before a day or two before school starts. And I understand that there's things that have to be tweaked and moved and things like that, I understand that. But at the same time, our students also deserve our respect as educators and the Board and administrators, that they get that information in a timely manner, so that they have time to prepare themselves if they may wonder about a specific teacher that they've heard bad things about or good things about, that they have that time to process that. I also have, I know that middle school is the hardest of the years for our students. They're in that middle, trying to figure out who they are and where they are and where they're going. So I think this creates a lot of anxiety for them. I also have concerns about our encore classes for our middle school students, because I know when Kaylee made the transition from elementary school to middle school, there was no choice given other than a music class. They were not talked to about anything except for you can choose if you want to be in band or choir, and that will be in all your course, but the rest of your encore classes will be chosen for you, and you have no say in that. It's come to my attention now, but they did get to do a little bit of thinking at the end of 6th grade here, but that's not communicated to parents. I had no idea that that happened. I got no information about what to expect from the different courses. She had drama last year, I still don't know what she was expected to learn during drama, nor if she did, other than her grade. And the same thing with the Project Lead the Way. There was no communication on what to expect as a parent out of that class for my child, so I had no idea. I also wanted to bring up that a lot of our activities for our older students are held after the school year starts. So open house is August 30th, and Black and Orange Day is August 26th. I would love if we could move at least open house to before the school year starts for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford.
Thank you, ma'am.
We will move on to our report session, President's Report 2.01. So on Monday, August 21st, we are excited to begin the new school year, so our 23, 24 school year is gonna kick off. We can't wait to welcome all our students and staff back with the students. I came in tonight with the phone books, I'm like, are y'all ready? They're like, huh. I'm like, okay, y'all have much longer. On Tuesday, August 15th, the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will present the school innovative innovation waiver request to the Missouri State Board of Education. Ritter, along with many districts from across the state, are part of the Success Ready Students Network. DESI is asking the State Board to replace the traditional state testing with a competency-based system. We anticipate the waiver request will be substanti- excuse me, substantively approved at this meeting. We look forward to keeping you updated about the status of the waiver and the potential new assessment model with the state of Missouri. That's all for our President's Report. We will move on to 2.02, Spur Intendents Report.
Thank you, Ms. Clever Jones. Board members, just a quick piece on what Lisa just shared. I'll share the link, there's gonna be a streaming link on the 15th for that meeting, the DESI Board meeting. Lisa Sorino, who's one of the Assistant Commissioners, she's presenting to the State Board on behalf of the Systems Success Ready Students Network. Again, believe this is gonna, is gonna pass, which is very exciting for us. So I would like to recognize the Human Resources Department here in the district. As we start this new academic year, 156th year of educating students in our community. So you know, the district was formed in 1867, but the education of kids goes back much farther than that, back to 1846. Long, proud history of the district. I, I, I'm excited to share that we're fully staffed with our teaching positions. We actually have one outlined position that was new after this report was created, so one opportunity here at the high school to get filled. And this was with some late movement, Board members want to share that with you. We had one teacher that was slated to go to one of our elementary schools, and at the very last moment, made the decision that education was not for her. The principal of that building was able to move very quickly, pull a team together, and identify a replacement, and that person is that new employee orientation. So all of that work would not have been possible without the great work of the Human Resources Team. That's Dr. Lachance, that's Charles Love, that's Wendy Jackson, that's Jamie Sims. They've all done great work in identifying high-quality candidates, following through and running equitable processes to ensure that we get the best and brightest in our classrooms. And as shared before, Board members, the competition for high-quality educators is stronger now than it's ever been before. And we hear stories on a regular basis of districts that are in double digits and in some cases, triple digits for the number of open teaching positions that they have in the district. So just wanna recognize Dr. Lachance, I don't see Mr. Love here with us for the great work that you've done to get us to a good place. Thanks, Mike.
We will move on to 2.04, NSBA, NSBA Report, Missouri District Report.
Hello, pretty. And, uh, no new updates other than the conference, if you haven't already let me know. And you might be the only ones who do it. But if you haven't let it know yet, please do so. There's also a regional meeting in September, so I'll be attending that, and I'll give you a report on that. And if there are any, like, specific issues or anything that you want, specific thing that you want me to bring up, I'm happy to do that as well, once I kind of get the agenda of what's gonna be discussed. But other than that, I think that's the only thing I have to remind us about.
Welcome to the August edition of the Missouri School Boards Association Report. We begin by looking forward to the start of a new school year in Missouri. Our public school will start the new year this month with great anticipation, but in an environment that continues to be challenging. With these challenges also comes the opportunity to share the success stories happening in public schools. This war of advocacy is a powerful way for school board members and districts to communicate the strengths and successes of their community schools, foster community engagement, and advocate for the well-being of students and educators. Our schools are filled with success stories, tales of students excelling in overcoming challenges, teachers going above and beyond, and innovative programs that set our public education system apart. NSBA's It's Power Y campaign is focused on helping schools share the outstanding accomplishments going on in public education through social media, websites, and other avenues, promoting the belief that Missouri schools are not just the beneficiaries of our efforts, they are our why. Recently, NSBA Board Directors gathered in Columbia for their quarterly meeting, and a few board members discussed their why.
My why is, I'm a former public school teacher. I believe in public schools, and I believe in teaching and learning. Kids come to school, and in many instances, it's the best place they've ever been. And so, I work for making sure that schools are available to kids, and that their caliber is excellent.
I come from a pretty poor part of the state of Southern Missouri. We are the sixth force congressional district in the United States. I've just seen the difference that education has made in children's lives. I believe in education as the key to prosperity, and I'm gonna do everything I can to advocate for students, so that every child has a chance to break up with education.
Because public education serves all kids. Every kid out there, whether it's a kid in poverty, or a kid with special needs, or that a kid that just recently moved to this country from another country, came and spoke English, we serve every single kid out there, not just a special sort of group.
As I am, I have a heart for children, and I want to see every child educated. I want to see them all have a fair opportunity. To see those little kindergartners, or even our preschool now come in, and then the one day, see them cross that stage and shake your hand, and you hand them a diploma, because they're graduating.
Visit the MSBA website for more information about the It's Power Y campaign, or use the hashtag #WeShareGoodNewsStories from your schools. NSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by a delegate assembly that will be meeting this coming November. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the Advocacy Committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The Advocacy Committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the delegate assembly that determines NSBA's positions on issues. Those position statements express to legislators, policymakers, the public, and the media where NSBA stands on issues affecting public schools. Be a part of this process by reviewing their current positions, discussing them with your fellow school board members, and proposing changes. Delegates will vote on the proposed changes at the Fall Delegate Assembly this November in Kansas City. All submissions are due online or postmarked to the MSBA Columbia office by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, September 4th. Registration is now open for the 2023 NSBA Annual Conference, in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials, to be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, the MSBA Education Expo, and of course, a great lineup of general session speakers. And 20 nominations for the 2024 Partner Team Award of Excellence in Advocacy Award are being accepted now through September 1st. The award is presented to a local board member who accepts at advocacy for public education. Visit the MSBA website for more information. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time in your board meeting, and we'll see you in September for the next MSBA Board Report.
Yeah, so that, is it the, um, the email that was sent with the document link? It's from August 8th, so, yes. So, quick 36 pages, go to do that. No, there's a few things last year that we were, that got a little tense, so would love to make sure I capture articles on any specific, if there's a specific issue that you want to chat about, feel free. So, yeah.
We will move on to 2.0, sorry, 2.04, Special School District Report. Mrs. Longness, I'm recording in. Is it safe? Is it open? Your reports, thank you. Yep. There's nothing to report this time. I haven't spoken to Rob, but, um, thank you. Thank you. 2.05, our student report. We will move on to 3.01, Construction Phase. Mr. Michael Smith?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. So of course, effective facilities help us gain permission and vision. Our facilities should provide the best physical environment for the morning to occur, and all district schools should provide consistent and equitable environments. Uh, here to remind you of the Marvin Exterior Envelope Repairs. Metal panels on the outside of Marvin are damaged from storms and weathering. And you can see those panels are hard damage, therefore it's also not insulating the school well or protecting it from the weather. EFS, which is Exterior Installation and Finish System, was installed in Marion, and they replaced similar metal panels at Marion. And that is actually less expensive than replacing it with a similar metal panel. Amoresco, which is our performance contractor, has quoted $717,936 to replace the metal panels with EFS. We would use mostly hazard three funds for the project, however, there's about $60,000 that insurance is likely to cover. The project duration is estimated to be two months. Question came up last week about disruption to the school. The disruptive work would be after school hours, or would be work during school hours, but it would be less so. Therefore, I'm recommending that the Board of Education accept Amoresco's bid of $717,936 for building envelope repairs at Marvin. I'm ready to answer questions.
Did you say $60,000 would be possibly covered?
About $60,000, that's what we're anticipating. Well, there would be like an insulation put between the wall, the wall and the panels? The EFS, actually, part of the EFS panel is insulation, so, so yes. Better than what we had now. Absolutely. So we'll protect it from moisture intruding into the building, as well as insulate, keeps it heat inside or cold inside.
I'd like to, I'd like to motion that we accept the Amoresco's bid of $717,936 for building envelope repairs at Marvin Elementary. Mrs. Longness?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Enriquez Camlott?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you.
Also, just a couple of other updates from last week to share, um, from last week's discussion. I'd like to let you know that for the cafeteria project, the permit was issued on Tuesday, so now we're moving forward, we had been moving forward, now we're gonna move forward faster. We met with Child Nutrition to be sure that we're meeting their needs, and we are. They're happy with the accommodations that we are gonna be providing for them. And also, the fire marshal has accepted. Those were some questions that came up last week, and I wanted to take you on.
Couple, couple of questions. Simple, over at Ritter Middle and Marion, we were working on those safety sections?
Yes.
How are they coming along?
They're almost finished.
They look like they were, and I didn't tell where we were.
Right now, there, there was, uh, some glass that came in cracks, so we had to replace that. They are finishing up right now with the electronic access, so.
And still, it really comes on in by road by, it was good. Wyden's one.
That's correct.
Whitehouse, right. Forgot what, yeah, there was, it was good there, too. I like that, that, I don't know what color it is, safety ballerina.
But as you recall, part of the safety recommendations from, uh, I'm sorry, it's a little mind, one of the safety recommendations from our, our safety report was that we install towers, and so we made a part of that project as well. A lot of work, Mike, I really appreciate it.
And I, I just want to be, make sure I'm clear on the, the high school thing now. Where is it that the students are gonna get their food, and then where do they go to, to eat their food?
So we're gonna be setting up the serving lines in the lower lobby, and there'll be two serving lines in the lower lobby over near the wall of fame, and there'll be one serving line in the art gallery. So it'll be going through those lines, and then they will be eating in the lower lobby, art gallery, upper lobby, four years, so we're making sure that there's accommodations for all of those students to have lunch.
And what is the time that, you know, this is expected to be done, or do you have any different answers on that?
So it could be as late as March, we're hoping for sooner. We were told that it could be as early as January, but we don't want to promise January, but we're expecting no later than March.
So definitely not until the second semester?
That is correct.
On transition day, do, do students have lunch for the year for a shorter time?
Sorry.
On transition?
Early movies?
No, no, on a transition day, they get a slice of snack. Okay, I was just thinking it would be a good time to test everything out, to make sure that everything kind of flowed a little bit.
So, yeah, so the, the seating is gonna be very similar to what it was coming back from the pandemic, when the seating was set up throughout the lower lobby, art gallery, and those areas and so on. Had some conversation about communication to families today in advance of the transition day, so that students and families perhaps could know what to expect from the pandemic.
Okay. I assume it'll be a good time to practice the line and setup, and if they're not eating lunch, then.
Right, might as well be, I'll bet.
Yeah.
Well, it was one of the things that came up today, like during our President meeting, I suggested to Dr. Kilbar that there may be some board members that physically want to see the space to get an idea. I know we're talking conceptual wise, but, so maybe reaching out also if people are interested in that, to kind of create more comfort around the conversation in case the community can reach out and say, hey, this is what's going on, and you have, be able to put eyes on what they're talking about, so.
That information will be in Friday memo tomorrow. Board members will work to identify some dates and set some times.
Um, sorry, last thing about the next year thing. So also, just want to like, um, kind of going back to the director's comment about communication and stuff, so that would be communicated to families as well, or like, that would you just?
So there was some conversation today during the President meeting about getting a message out to the community before the first day, before the transition day likely, about where we are with the project.
Got it, okay. Got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
3.02, Policy VFA, Conflict of Interest and Financial Disrupture Re-Adoption.
Thank you, Lisa. Board members, this is a statutory required act, it's supposed to be biennial, so it's every two years. But we started a practice back in 2015 that the Board would re-adopt VFA on a yearly basis. So that doesn't mean, make edits to VFA on a yearly basis, even though there were some edits to the policy that were made last year. It does mean to re-adopt in open session the policy, having to do with school board governance and operation. So I won't read verbatim the entire policy, but I'll, I'll call out some provisions of policy, and this has been uploaded in Word docs for board members to read through throughout the week. We'd be looking for a motion, you know, a first, second, a motion and a second, and approval to re-approve this policy, and then that would be a part of our items, not wave checklist that we have to complete for DESI to show that we're in compliance with expectations. So under employment of VFA, the district will not employ members of the Ritter Board, nor accept applications of employment for board members, from board members, consider board members for employment, or decide to employ board members while they remain on the board. Board members, there are a number of provisions around self-dealing, items one through six, and I know that you've taken the time to take a look again through items one through six. Board members may not act, or refrain from acting by reason of payment, offer to pay, promise to pay, or receipt of anything of actual pecuniary value, whether received or not, to themselves or any third person. Board members, regarding the use of confidential information, board members shall not use nor disclose confidential information obtained in the course of or by reason of their official capacities in any manner, with the intent to result in financial gain for themselves, spouses, dependent children, in their custody, any business which the board member has associated, or any other person. Board members, there's nepotism provisions that are in Policy V. Board members, there's nepotism provisions that are in policy BBFA. The edits that were made last year are in, are under other districts, nepotism prohibitions. No person will be newly employed or appointed to a position in the district if the person is related within the fourth degree by consanguinity or affinity to a member of the Board of Education. That was the edit to the policy that was approved last year. If a person is already an employee of the district, he or she may be hired for extra duty positions, or may be allowed to change positions, as long as the change is not considered The chart of the relations is also a part of this policy, and again, board members, just appreciate the transparency that you operate with in that we moved this from consent, and you approve and re-approve this every year, which is above and beyond the expectation. So we just wanted to offer that for your consideration tonight.
Madam President, if I may, I'd like to move that we re-adopt policy BBFA, which is conflict of interest and financial disclosure, as required by this Board.
Ms. Enrique Esquimbo?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. DeGarden?
Yes.
Ms. Solans?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Moving on to three point zero three, program evaluation for safe drug and preschools. This is Julie.
Good evening. So hopefully you had an opportunity to review the report, which was quite lengthy. So I'm going to give you an overview of some of the report, just talk through some of the data that we look at on a regular basis. So obviously, with our mission, we want to make sure that we're providing a supportive environment for our students, while we make sure we meet their social needs and civic excellence as well. So when we look at what is a safe and drug-free school, we can look at a definition, but there are often questions that we would ask. And do our students and staff feel welcome in all of our buildings is a big one. And that means all languages, all ethnicities, whatever your gender identification is, do they feel welcome? So we do surveys to look at that, and we look at other data, even office referrals for particular groups, we want to see are students feeling welcome? Is our environment free of intimidation, violence? That is something where we can look at office referrals, we can look at reports that come in through the community for, can also look at safe and drug-free, or sorry, safe school violations. Are people afraid to go to school? And that doesn't just mean in our buildings, if they're afraid at bus stops, if they're afraid in the community, that causes stress for people coming into a school setting. Do students feel they belong, and they're cared for and appreciated? And this is one we often ask with, do you have somebody that you can trust, somebody at the school that you can reach out to? Very important for our students to feel they have a sense of belonging, and as you know, in the past, in some of our student surveys, that is not always an area where students say, yes, I feel like I have a person or someone that really truly cares about me in all the buildings. And are our buildings fully free and responsive to incidents of harm and hate? So as you read through that report, you can see, do we have any bullying incidents? Are those getting reported, and are we following up on those? So this is a graphic that we use because it is, we can't just talk about academics in schools, we have to make sure our students are well, we have to make sure our staff as well. So we can put all these pieces together, but if we're missing out on that balance of social, emotional well-being, our students are not going to be well, and they're not going to learn. And I think that's a big piece that sometimes we forget. We talk about it a lot, but it has to be a high priority, because if we're looking at our test scores and we're not seeing a lot of growth, we do need to question, are our students well? We have a very strong, multi-tiered system of support within the school district. You can see on this triangle that we use, it's kind of hard to see, but we have an academic side, we have a behavior, social, emotional side. And if you look at this, we have ways of screening students to identify who are those students that might be at risk? And does our triangle really look like eighty percent of our students are on target with their academics? And at least eight percent are on target socially and emotionally? And I will tell you, our triangle does not look like this. So that's what we need to question, what else do we need to put in place? What other supports do students need? And at the top of the triangle, the very top, are the students that probably need the most support. That should be about two to five percent of our students. Unfortunately, that is a little bit higher than regular. So we have put a lot of these structures in place, some are, you could see the report doing, you know, in all buildings, some are not. So that is an area of opportunity for us as a school district. How do we make sure, if we know these are best practices, that all administrators and all buildings have these fully in place with fidelity? So this is just a quick set of questions that I would say we would definitely want to answer yes to, if we are becoming trauma-informed and really thinking about neuroscience, and how does the brain affect stress and our ability to learn? Can all students and staff say, my school, the boss cafeteria hall is a safe and secure place? If not, we have work to do, I feel connected. There's a lot of laughter and smiling in the building. So if we see that there's not a lot of laughter and smiling, possibly not a place where you would want to come back out. Is there structured movement and play in my school? And when I'm talking about play, I'm really, really talking about elementary, the younger students, but also the middle school students. What does play look like? Our students, many of them, do not really know how to play anymore because of social media, because of the fact that we're trying to get in a lot of academics, not that we don't want to get that in, but are we allowing students to play and have that ability to know how to socialize appropriately? Does the school teach me about my brain, stress, and how I can best learn? We put these structures in place when we have refocus rooms, or we have refocus rooms, when we have what we used to call DWD, which is now co-regulation rooms. Are we teaching our students about brain, stress, mental health, and how they respond to extreme stress? And are the rooms active? So which you want to sit there all day? And if not, you know, have we taught those routines and procedures? And is it a very safe environment where it doesn't feel chaotic? So if there's a classroom where it may feel very chaotic, it's not going to be a healthy place for students. So one of the tools that we also use, twice a year, we will be doing surveys with students on their overall well-being, and this is with the Panorama Dashboard. You can look in the report and see it school by school. This is an overall of where we were in May for our first full year piloting. This is looking at all students overall. You can see we're in the core area for academics, and then in the yellow, which means fair for attendance, behavior, and SEL. SEL means with the student surveys, how they feel about their own well-being. They rank themselves. Another area that we look at regularly are how many suicide prevention plans are we putting in place as a school district? You look at the number last year, we had three hundred and sixty suicide prevention plans. This is the highest number we have ever had, that I can recall, since I've been here, for suicide prevention plans. That is alarming. That means we've had a lot of students that are hurting, that we may have had to have either hospitalized, work with families on, work with BJC or VHR to help put supports in place for those students. Those plans start as early as kindergarten. So just want you to be aware that we had in kindergarten, eleven plans that were put in place, and twelfth grade, we had twenty-six, but the highest grade level was third grade, where there were fifty-two plans put in place. So I think that should be alarming for everyone, because we're talking about little students who are feeling like they are very stressed, and that they don't want to, or they're talking about self-harm, or I don't want to be here. I want to cry thinking about how that must be to go home, or to feel like that all the time, or maybe to come to school. Gaggle is a tool we use where we can get alerts when students are on Google or using the Rittner email, to let us know if they're either looking up something inappropriate, something sexual, if there's maybe sexual videos being passed around, if there's nudity, if there is a lot of cussing, something that, or the kind of fight. These are the alerts that administrators get, and then we respond to those right away. The possible student situations are crisis situations. These are the ones where it could be about a student possibly saying, I want to kill myself. So when we hit those red alerts, if somebody doesn't respond immediately, we get a call from the company, within five minutes, they text us, they call us, and say, you need to respond right away. So we had sixty-six of those calls last year, which is a plus, that we know that we can respond to those sixty-six students that might be in a crisis situation. That happens in the evenings, it happens on the weekends, we respond to these all year round. vacations, it doesn't matter. So I'm proud of the fact that our administrators are on top of this, of counselors as well, responding to student situations. Some other data indicators, last year, we had two hundred and thirty-two hotline calls for abuse and neglect. Classroom referrals and bathroom referrals, I put those on there because I want you to see that the bathroom referrals, we had a number of bathroom referrals last year. A lot of that had to do with either fighting, or vaping, smoking within the bathrooms. Were those being addressed? Yes, but that's three hundred and twenty-nine, too many bathroom referrals. Another area of concern is bully reports. And in my opinion, that number is low. I think there's probably more bullying going on in there, and I think this is an area of opportunity as a school district, that we give students and parents more information on how do you report bullying, and what is the follow-up on bullying? Same thing for Title IX reports, we had nine last year. However, if you look at our office referrals, we have much more sexual harassment referrals. So Dr. Lachance and I talked with administrators about this, that this is an area that we need to keep focus on, because that does not match what we are seeing overall. Threat assessments are when we pull our threat assessment team together. Sometimes that could involve our SROs, it involves a district-level team, administrators when we feel that a student might be a potential threat to other students, to the building, or possibly to the community. Could be a video that might be posted of a student with a weapon, or saying, I'm going to blow up the school, something to that effect, that we respond right away. And the safe line, encourage to report, this is an opportunity for families to anonymously report, hey, something's going on, something's about to happen, I know this is happening in the community. There were only seven of those. And that's why I'm saying this is another area of opportunity for our team, as the crisis team, how do we get that word out so people do know how to report and feel like they can report something, you know, that will be responded to right away? The courage to report comes through the state of Missouri, and we do get those, and we have to show how we follow up immediately. Just want to quickly go over, this is just an overview of the district for last year, with our discipline referrals from the district, and we have almost thirteen thousand office referrals last school year. All the buildings had an increase, except for Booter Elementary and Guayland Elementary. Guayland was our lowest, with only ninety-one office referrals for the school year. The numbers doubled at, almost doubled at middle and high school last year. If you look at disciplinary hearings, this number is actually lower than what it really was, because we did have some following when I pulled this report together in May. We had three hundred, about three hundred and thirty, three hundred something disciplinary hearings, and if you recall, those are when students are getting ten-day suspension from the building, and then they come to the district level for a hearing. Additionally, we had fifteen safe schools violations, which means we're getting information from the courts, that students did something in the community, and at that time, we will have a disciplinary hearing to see whether or not we need to have that student be placed in an alternative setting, get a hundred and eighty days, or put a court in place in safe school. For our out-of-school suspension days, we had a total of almost fourteen thousand days of out-of-school suspension. Looking at our physical interventions, and you might say, wow, this has really jumped quite a bit this past year. If you recall, the state came up with a new law that we have to report immediately any physical intervention. The majority of these physical interventions are taking place with students who might have an IEP, or some type of plan that requires them to, the adults to physically intervene to prevent safety issues for that particular student. So this goes into DESI, it gets reported, so this will be monitored every year for the Rittner School District. So some of the strengths and opportunities, we have great safety plans, when there are bullying situations, when there are different concerns with students, the opportunity would be to make sure that all of those plans are being enforced and documented, because that's something that kind of falls by the wayside unfortunately in some situations. The plans are there, the structure is there, we just need to make sure it's happening in a timely manner. Same thing for individual student success plan, rather than waiting until a student goes to alternative ed, or comes to a suspension, those plans need to be created, put in place, shared with the team, and followed up on a regular basis. We have refocus and co-regulation rooms, these could be great opportunities, and I feel like they're great opportunities, and we always say, make sure you have a bases in the right places. The people in these rooms are key, because they're working with some of our most dysregulated students. Secondary schools, the use of the rooms has sometimes been more punitive, that's not what these were meant to be, so that's an area of opportunity. I also believe there's an area of opportunity at Rittner High School, to have a room where students can go to help get dysregulated, and feel like this is part of their student success plan, and not to be a punishment, but how do we help you get back so you're successful? Some trauma-informed work is going on within the district, however, we started this over eighty years ago, we should have that in all buildings, no problems, but it has been inconsistent throughout the school district. The pandemic puts us back a little bit, but it's time to move forward and make sure that we have that going on in all schools for our students. Counseling lessons and groups, you have been very grateful in making sure we have the right amount of SEL people for our students. We need to make sure we are not being reactive, but also being proactive and preventative, getting in the classrooms, and at all levels implementing that curriculum. This is where we can teach students, what is sexual harassment? How do you respond to that? What do you do if somebody's bullying you? If we're not getting in there, they're not getting the message. We do have, like I showed you, systems to report and respond. We need to make sure we have a very easy system for students to say, hey, there's about a fight that's about to go down, or hey, somebody's bullying me, I need to talk to someone, and we need to make sure we are responding to that right away. We have a very strong SEL team members, but that is for the future, making sure we maintain that SEL team member staffing, because with the mental health crises that's going on in the world, the more people that we take away, the harder it is going to be to support our students. So our theme for social, emotional learning for the past several years has been, you belong, you matter, and I think this is true for our staff, as well as our students. We need to make sure that our students feel they belong, we need to make sure that they matter, and they know they matter, and the same thing for our staff. So, you know, every student, every day, that you belong, you matter, and we need to make sure that they can say, hey, I feel like that in the Rittner School District. Any questions?
I have a question. First, thank you for putting together this report and then sharing it with us, and I'll take a look at the data a little bit closer. One of the things I had a question about, when you're looking at that progression, comparing the strengths versus the opportunities, what does the plan look like to help us get on track with being more consistent with the restorative practices and trauma-informed schools? Because right now, when we look at that grid, I think there's maybe one elementary school that's now truly in the trauma-informed category. So what does that plan look like, and who is actually responsible for that?
So that, I am also really responsible for that, and I find, like last year, doing for a year and fifty years, I'm not getting into those buildings. And I find, like last year doing for a year and fifty years, I'm not getting into those buildings. So my hope is that if we put some of these structures in place and that we've done the training, that we've done plenty of training. So I don't feel like that is an area where we need to keep going back on. I need to make sure that administrators who are responsible for their buildings are also making sure that these are properly situated in the building.
And what does that look like for when we get the news back from the district? Do they go through training or is that part of the NEO? Or is it just like?
So it was not part of NEO. So social emotional learning was not part of NEO this year. I covered a little bit when I went over assessments, but I've definitely offered opportunities throughout the year. But de-escalation is a big piece. Making sure people understand trauma-informed supports. They do that in their buildings. But we need to have a common theme. We will have Jessica Skonarski here presenting to all the elementary on the brain, trauma. But again, that secondary level is critical. Because if we put all the structures in place in elementary and then we take them away at the secondary, it's not gonna be good for our students. Do they have any questions?
I do.
This is very, very important, very telling of what we still.
We have opportunities. We're doing great things and I want you to know, we are still ahead in the whole county with what we're doing, but we have opportunities. And I want to say, and I say it, I have a student, we have a student, many of our students need our support and they are hurting. I don't know about you, but I'm just a student in general.
Yeah, she did make a comment that there's a lot of surveys sent out, but they, a lot of the students aren't honest on this because they're afraid that they can't be traced back to them.
Well, I would say many are. Many are honest.
Yeah, so, yeah, that may be something that's keeping some of the information from the district.
And those are all anonymous, so.
Thank you for your question.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
You had mentioned about the SafeLine number and getting that out and everything. Is there an opportunity for us to maybe do something like the Rittner Magnet? Again, I know that we had done one as a PTO when I was in Marion a long time ago, that at least had the school number on it and things like that. But even putting like kind of your main numbers on it or something and then kind of having that SafeLine number there.
So yeah, more prominently displayed on the website was a step that was taken and then also board members, if you approve the edited night of consent. Also nine to eight, eight on students' IDs front and back would be a piece of it. I think you're asking about magnets too. That can be a conversation that we can have with Doug Bray.
I do like it being on the student's ID. I have it on my ID for work. So, you know, if you have an emergency, you just flip your ID over.
The magnet idea, we can, you know, kick around a bit.
I was looking on the website, that was what I was playing with. I'm sorry if that's being good. If you saw me kind of searching around, just to see if it was like easy to find. And it's easy to find if you know to look for SafeLine. So I didn't know, is it supposed to be on the front screen?
It's down at the bottom of the website.
And you don't know what to call, and you would be searching.
No, it's a very good opportunity for us.
Yeah. So just wanted to share that because I think it's very important to give people a safe place to reach out to.
So, and I just want to say there are many great things going on. I just always show the data where it's, but this is really what's happening. And so we do have a lot of things that we can be doing.
Yeah, and I think like amazing work, Julie. I know you're like over so many things and you're accountable for so many of these metrics. And I think one thing this always has me thinking about reflecting on as a board and just our whole idea of community. And when you started the presentation by talking about, you know, students feeling safe outside of just here. And sometimes students may not find safety here, but they may find it in a nearby, you know, business or somewhere or like a Schnucks employee or something, you know what I mean? Like really, I know I worked close to a high school when, and you hear all sorts of things. You hear about, you know, what's happening. And so it's just having me really reflect on like, how are we continuing to better those partnerships? Like the local businesses and the businesses that tend to get a lot of our students so that they also get into the fold of this. And it's not always punitive, but there is that connection of like, "Hey, we're hearing some stirring around this or that." And it's not straight to, "Let's call the police." You know what I mean? Like how is also, like how are we?
I kind of like that too because Mike Smith does a really good job of pulling together the municipalities, the police municipalities and the police chiefs. But it's also the businesses and some of the community centers, some of the other places as well.
Okay. So anyway, and again, I think just for us as a board, like thinking of the larger community and really having some vision for transformation so that students can feel safe in different places outside of just the school building. You know, I mean, I know that's something that we all know and we see it. You know, there's no place for some of our young people to just go and be outside of here. So anyway, I just wanted to say that it would be very close to see more of that.
I'm sorry to ask one more question. Is there any advantage to, like on these numbers, to knowing how many students? Because we know that some of these numbers are actually multiple.
Okay. So that's. So it could be one student getting twenty referrals, right? Okay.
Madam President, I'd like to move that we approve the Safe and Drug-Free Schools Program as presented to the Board this evening.
Second. Mrs. Erica Sembal?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Lawness?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really thank you for all your input.
Thank you.
We will move on to three point zero four, the second reading of Policy KC.
So board members, this is procedural when we add new policy that's not existing on our books. There's a first reading, second reading, and approval process. So this is the second reading and we're seeking your approval of Policy KC, which has to do with community involvement and decision-making at the district level. I won't read the whole policy verbatim, but we'll pick out a couple of highlights and then be asking for your approval of Policy KC. The Board is mindful that it is accountable to the patrons of the district and shall give substantial weight to the advice it receives from individuals and community groups interested in the district's schools. Community involvement is not only important at the district level, but is often most effective at the school level. Board members, this is the second reading of Policy KC, seeking your approval of Policy KC to add to our report.
Madam President, if there is no questions, I move that we approve Policy KC as presented to the Board of Education in this evening.
A second. Mrs. Lawness?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGardner?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Erica Sembal?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
We will move on to three point zero five, STLCC for Dual Enrollment. Can I have a Dr. Thomas?
First, thank you for the opportunity to present our MOU as St. Louis Community College. That is in line with our vision and mission to ensure that we have the resources to ensure that our students get what they need. So we look at dual enrollment for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We had thirty-four students that were enrolled. Those students were enrolled in forty-two different classes, which resulted in a hundred and forty-nine course grades. Our total loss for last school year was forty thousand, eight hundred, fourteen dollars and fourteen cents. So our preliminary enrollment for fall of twenty twenty-three, currently we have fifty-seven students that will enroll at St. Louis Community College, non-avoidant, full-time, for getting part-time. And twelve students are returning from the previous year. So we're looking at forty-five new students that gives us fifty-seven. So recall, last year we did have one student who earned an associate's degree as well as actual enrollment, which is a great opportunity. And the hope is that we receive more associate's degrees out of the twelve students that are returning from the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. So in terms of cost, we're looking at seventeen students with tuition-only costs. And that's because they're part of the Rittner Community College offers and they're forty students who we're looking at paying for tuition costs. Looking at somewhere around fifty-seven to sixty thousand dollars a course, which is in the budget for our this school year. Fast forwarding to dual credit, currently with the St. Louis Community College, we have five courses that we offer through Community College. We do have partnership with other colleges, but this is for the Community College. Those five courses are listed on the screen. The numbers next to it are the number of students that we have enrolled. Twenty-eight students for community actions, one. Seventy-nine students for college count one, twenty-six for college count two. Intermediate houses, forty-seven students in pre-conference houses, which is our college house of course, is thirty-two students. And you add those up, you're getting a little over two-hundred students, but some of these students are taking more than one class. So it's not really two-hundred-plus students that are enrolled off these courses. Set number is paid due to students taking more than one class. For dual credit, our students have paid twenty-five dollars per credit hour for those courses. There's one exception, which is the math one forty. That's the intermediate house of course. Now we have to pay twenty-five dollars for that course. But twenty-five dollars per credit hour with the St. Louis Community College, there is an opportunity for students that qualify career reduced lunch. We utilize the JPMorgan Scholarship Program where they can take up to six credits of dual enrollment per student. That's their tuition costs to students. So we take advantage of that. In terms of our business impact, again, we do have students participating in the St. Louis Academy Grant where textbook and transportation is provided or cost is allocated for that for St. Louis Community College. Our dual enrollment expense is seventy-two dollars and fifty cents per credit. No increases from comparing to last year. And we look at students taking three credits. That's two hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents per course. Average student may take six units of six credits, which is four hundred and thirty-five dollars. Official fees for lab, our lab fees and textbooks. And then we have our Rittner counselor coordinator that supports our students. We're making some changes in our guidance department this year so we can offer more support to our students that are participating in dual enrollment as well as dual credit opportunities. So included in the board materials that you have, as MOU talks about dual credit as well as dual enrollment, dual enrollment being seventy-two fifty, dual credit is twenty-five dollars. We're asking that you approve the seventy-two dollars and fifty cents per credit hour for dual enrollment of the St. Louis Community College as presented for this week. Thank you. I have some questions.
Yeah, another question. I was wondering, out of the full-time, do they pretty much offer it just in person? Or do they also do it in-person and on Zoom at home?
Yeah, I'm not sure of the virtual options for the students. I know at one point there were no virtual options. So a lot of colleges are trying to push back to the in-person classes. So I'm not sure if this will be how these students have.
For those students that go full-time, I'm just curious. Some of them may not be able to afford to get lunch when they're there. Is there an opportunity to like grab lunch that they can have before they go? Or I'm just curious because I think for them to be there all day long and they don't have any way to eat.
Absolutely, something we can look into.
I may want to ask. And that's all my questions. Does anybody else have a question?
Dr. Green, this is very, very important. I just wonder, and it's, you got a lot of kids doing this. I think that's just the iceberg, what we came here to. Is it well-known? Do they understand even if they are planning on going to a four-year college somewhere, if they can transfer these programs there?
We definitely try to put more literature out there about it and more conversations with counselors. Last year there was a dual enrollment meeting we had. We had it in the library. There was pretty much standard enrollment. But I agree, there should be more students that are involved that are taking advantage of these opportunities, particularly with dual enrollment as well as dual credit. I think sometimes our students don't realize some of those opportunities until you have a doctor and say, "You need to do this, you need to do this. This is great for you." And also wish our students to learn the associate's degree and a high school diploma.
That was those two years ahead of where they would be and at a very good cost. I really, I really wish we explained it, pushed it, advertised it. Whatever we got to do to get it out to the masses so that they can understand a good deal of this is far from the thing without doing junior college or four-year college. This is good.
Absolutely. I know, we look at the numbers and can break them. That's a great time. We're getting the word out there. Right, twenty-three more students this year than last year. So some improved, but definitely more should be.
So board members, we'd just like to give a shout out to Senator Jill Schute, former Senator Jill Schute. I can still remember in twenty sixteen when she brought the team together, including the new chancellor Jeff Pittman at St. Louis Community College to talk about this idea of expanding dual credit, dual enrollment. Rittner was one of the early adopters. Numbers are down a little bit because we did have, I think our high was, we had six students that received their diploma and their associates at the same time. We had one student last year accomplish the first start in the right direction again. But a shout out to Senator Schute, which was really the impetus behind at the state level moving in this direction.
And I also like to state, like, Misha has gotten on board too. That was always a concern for a lot of students because if they're, if they weren't sitting at the high school, then they weren't allowed to play and participate. So that is great too. I would like kind of notification pieces as a suggestion. So there was a comment made to me that one of the students I know, she was finishing up her credits, it would be done in December, and then was just going to wait to go to school until the next year. She didn't realize that she could actually still take classes at STLCC because she thought she was done with her credits at Rittner, that it wouldn't matter if she took those credits there. So just kind of getting that out too, because I know a lot of students get ahead in that way, that they, you know, continue and, you know, use that opportunity to use in going through the schools where they're not paying for it. So I just wanted to share that as kind of a little extra. And am I missing something? I do not have a separate document for that MOU. It was on there yesterday. I only have it today. So I thought so. Yeah, it's not on there today, but it was on there yesterday. But the presentation wasn't on there yesterday. Okay, well, I, yes. I thought I was like. It's a long document. I wonder what it's about to come out here. Yeah. I thought it's because I, MOU was, yes, was on there. So.
Madam President, if I may, I'd like to move that we approve the St. Louis Community College Dual Enrollment MOU as presented to the Board of Education.
Second.
Great program. That's good.
All right. Mrs. Lawness?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGardner?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Absolutely, yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Erica Sembal?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next year, let's have that a hundred and fifty-three students. We'll look at this. I'd love to see it. Thank you, Senator.
We will move on to three point zero six, the Mathemazium update. I got the papers stored.
So I'm here to give an update on Mathemazium and prepare our partnership together. The goal and the vision and mission of Mathemazium is looking in line with our vision and mission to improve the achievement of students in math and not just the achievement of math, like I said before, is also the confidence that students have in math as well. like I said before, is also the confidence that students have in math as well. Our goal also is to ensure, to go back a little bit, that our students are able to achieve the high levels in math and think critically, so that they're able to solve problems in math and that they are successful in the future. It also lies our equity statement and our equity statement, just ensuring that students are, there's individualized learning plan that Mathemazium creates for rational students so that they can reach their personal goals. Today, we're going to talk about a little bit about the rationale, the math data from last school year in 2022, update the unit plan again for this year, take approved results from Mathemazium and results from our parent survey, and any questions that you may have. So this is the data from 2022, from 2018 to 2022, really comparing math data across our district, as well as the data for Missouri, just comparing those two, and you can see that gap between what our students are performing in math compared to the Seglos. And then you can also see broken down by grade level and course for math, third through eight, and the ELCs for out of the primary or the two, comparing Missouri and Ritter's performance in math. So just to review what Mathemazium and Ritter is proposing for this coming school year from September first to May 31st, we want to give our parents a choice. They can bring their student to Husky Support Center or the location, the Mathemazium location at Creek Court. We're hoping that our parents will be able to provide transportation for their child to Husky Support Center, and that will be closer for our families. Just as long as you have about twenty-five students enrolled, we can continue to have a Mathemazium at our Husky Support Center, which will serve two hundred students, a hundred at a middle school, a hundred at a high school, for these three times a week for the hour. Fees have increased to five dollars more per month for our middle and high school students, two hundred and sixty-five dollars per month for middle school students, two hundred and five dollars per month for high school students, and then maybe four dollars fifty cents per student for their diagnostic assessment fees. So just to reiterate, the Mathemazium plan for our two hundred students, parents providing transportation for students at the Creek Court location or Husky Support Center. And just to also talk about the incentive program that Mathemazium has, they are really, really advocate for students to be tapped with incentive programs and motivate the students. When they get registered on their quizzes, they get a special wheel, a braffle ticket, so they really support the incentive program. Just looking at the results for our students at the high school, looking at the pre and post-test results for Mathemazium, their pre and post-test, we're seeing about seventeen percent increase for the high school students, Ritter enrollment students saw about twenty percent increase, and students from Hagan Middle School saw about a twenty-two percent increase. We had a parent survey and talked about opportunities in that area, there were only ten parents that responded, but we are going to look into also Mathemazium having some surveys there. So overall, we've got ten parents, so nine parents are saying that they rate the impact of math during the program, understanding that it was excellent, and then ten percent saying it was fair. And how likely do you like to recommend the Mathemazium program to families? All of the parents said it was very. So I shared these results also with the owner of Mathemazium, with strengths and opportunities last week, the strengths, competence in school, improvement in math, and changing the perception about math, showing that math is fun, that weakened flexibility, some of our parents are saying that that was very beneficial, and also the math at the ELC tested support and that small group opportunity to learn in that setting as well. And opportunities at transportation fees, more proper updates for parents, I've talked to the owner about that, and I think he will learn from that as well. This is the celebration we have with Mathemazium and Ritter. And that's, do you have any questions?
For the middle schools, we take that hundred, about between the two schools, or do we go by recommendations, needs, how big?
In the past, what we've done is we just, it's first come, first served, I mean, that's what we've done in the past, it hasn't been like fifty here, fifty there, that's what we've done in the past. We've had, when they would sign up, it's E-Form through Tyler in our system, our parents would sign up on their child, so we have a method in the past. We've had plenty of spots, we're open for families to, we had a lot of spots for them to sign up at this point.
The next question is, have we done to promote this better, put it out there more? Then we do, we get a lot of people then. Probably.
So, Dr. Stewart.
We have talked about having a video, like, we've been doing also talking to our parents for five days as well.
Yeah, so there's been a conversation, also, you know, sometimes it's hard to, you know, Ms. Bradford, in a portion of her statement, shared that there's a lot of messages that come out, some, you know, maybe important, some not so important, but I think sometimes we flood the channels with some information. So we're actually looking to get some media coverage if the board approves this. We generally have media coverage with Channel Five to start the school year with Ritter, so it's part of that conversation, not only to kick off to the year with sports and so on like we had last year, but featuring this partnership with Mathemazium. Mathemazium's got some urgency around this too. This is the first, if the board presents such partnership, that Mathemazium would have. Generally, Mathemazium tries to target certain areas for their centers. They don't have any centers in partnership with a school district. They don't have any centers that are inside a school district building, so we would be the first such. And so there's criteria that, you know, we have to follow that they have, and that's why the one dollar lease that you see uploaded in Word docs, they have to have, you know, a lockable space where their curriculum, which is proprietary, can be locked up, so it can't be duplicated and so on. So there's that criteria that we have to follow. But the question is around communication, trying to reach out to media so that our families can hear it from another source that might drive the urgency up a little bit too.
And I think also, so obviously, teachers, you know, about the, like, having teachers recommended or having somebody.
I suppose you're wondering how we.
So teachers, the teachers do know about the partnership, they're well aware of that as well, because I do think, like, that is, I don't doubt that the media will also work, I just know, like, if my child's teacher tells me directly, like, this is a resource that we have, this is an added thing that you can sign up for, I'm much more likely to do that. So, you know, just, again, I think we talked about at maybe like open house or parent teacher conferences and stuff, having some of the pamphlets, or at least having some information visibly out to for parents to see.
That was a conversation that Dr. Stewart and I had with the director last Friday.
We did, we talked about the transition day, for, you know, Mathemazium table, you know, with some flyers, maybe physical, so we already talked to the owner about that. So we're also thinking about ways to really work out a little bit better as well.
And even like the champion, I would consider like the ten parents who filled out the survey to be champions, you know, because they actually took the survey, and so, you know, some parents, there may be a perception now of, oh, have you heard of that thing? Oh, yeah, well, you have to drive your kid there, it's all the way to Creek Court. So, you know, in order to mitigate some of that as well, having these parents serve as champions out in their circles in the community to talk about it, so, you know, it's great, it's also changed, you know, they now have it here, so, you know, maybe just considering having more of that personal touch with the students to go with it out. Considering it was only ten, you know, I think it's a pretty easy thing that could have a high impact on the community.
I think we're really excited about it. I mean, seeing the results that we're getting from this, I mean, my next question is the sustainability. If you're going to be, you know, having more of this partnership to ensure it's great for one or two years, but I think it really has shown its effectiveness. And also, I think in partnership, just working with our teachers so that we can have this program for longer than what that's our funds with.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And Board members, a reminder, this is all ESAR-funded, and the budgeting is about priorities. And so we know that what ESAR funding does, that when the clip comes, September 30th, 2024, it's all about priorities to create sustainability moving forward. And so if we're going to continue this partnership, we'll have to have that conversation as we always do, around priorities for kids.
The cost is per month?
Per check.
Per check. Per month or so. And then I noticed that we focus on our middle school and high school students. With us moving to competency base, how does that fit for our fifth graders?
So.
The owner is really asking for that too, to bring in some fifth graders, because he feels that, you know, parents are really, can't fill in, so absolutely, so he's had those conversations also.
And so this would be for two hundred seats, you know, so there may be some transition for seats, and if there's open seats, and we've targeted students that we want to make sure are in this, once we get to the end of that list, if there's space for fifth graders, then perhaps we could go in that direction.
Do we survey the students?
We did have a survey for students, I think you said that information, I have, yes. We need to do a better job with the survey, to be honest, so, you know.
And I'm asking that because, kind of piggybacking on what we mentioned about the parent voice, a lot of times, student voice, especially at this age, if a student can talk to another student, and like, hey, I was struggling at one point in time with this, but I've been going to Mathemazium, and it's really helped me, so I think that is also beneficial when you talk about our secondary levels, who are those student champions in these spaces that have been part of this program, and that maybe that can create opportunities like, hey, this is my friend Kevin Carpool, so a parent is saying, well, the transportation is a barrier, then that creates the community that we're talking about, the one I try to have, or will touch on in my send.
Yeah, when there's a, when there's an event that we have to be aware of and it's out in public, a superintendent will give us maybe some talking points so that we can pinpoint some of the highlights of what's going on and communicate those out. Our teachers, our managers, our principal in these schools, maybe if they had talking points, so that they can bring those points to the parents, you know, because this might be a harder thing to wrap their hands around in a five-minute conversation with a parent as they're talking to a parent on the phone or something, if we give them some talking points of what this is, what they'll do, where it is, and so they can promote it as well.
Because they, you know, they may not have ever been there, you know, a lot about it, so, yeah, we can download it.
Madam President, I believe that we approve the Mathemazium MOU and the Mathemazium lease agreement. At this board meeting tonight.
Mrs. Senor Gisbonde?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dart?
Yes.
Mrs. Smollett?
Yes.
And I will go, yes.
Thank you.
We are going to move on to Creek Court, Jerus, EPA grant, electric buses, Mr. Boyd Lynn, and Mr. Barnes.
We have an exciting presentation tonight, and this one is exciting compared to most presentations. We've asked Brian Secker, Director of Training and Education, to sit around and join us Of course, part of meaning our vision and mission is getting kids to school, and that's what our bus transportation does. And equity statement, as you know, the board policy is anything over my own, we transfer those. So this is about the potential grant to the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA. They offer grants to replace older buses with newer buses to help with emissions, reduce emissions. Normally, these grants, you have to replace models 2010 older, ours are 2018 diesel models. But Midwest Bus Sales, they, Thomas Bus, they would contact the EPA by a unique scenario where instead of trading our buses, they would purchase our old buses, and then commit to already having contracts with other school districts to replace those old 2010 old buses. So in our case, we have twenty-eight buses, we have twenty-four route buses, we would replace twenty-four, our twenty-four route buses, those diesel buses with EV or electric vehicles, we would keep four diesel buses for longer trips, and I'll explain that in a few minutes. So the grant generally covers the buses and the infrastructure to charge all twenty-four of those buses. The objective of this grant, as it'll be written, will be for no out-of-buck truck bus for the district. It's possible there could be some minimal out-of-buck bus, and those probably wouldn't be more than thirty or fifty thousand dollars. So it's very good on the grant scheme as we talk about this grant, and again, I'll give it a more detailed statement. Seglos Clean Cities, which is a nonprofit organization, would be the grant writer for us, and the deadline for this application is August 22nd for this grant, and these would be, oh, the EPA will award them in a. So EV batteries go about a hundred and thirty miles on the charge in the bus. Most of our buses drive less than thirty miles a day, we're only ten square miles, the district is, and so even on morning and afternoon routes, most of them go about thirty or less. Only two out of our twenty-four route buses run one thirty a day. So we wouldn't even have to charge them every day. And again, we'd keep four diesel buses for longer trips. The useful life right now of an EV is fifteen years, same as a diesel model, and then the Department of Development, Training Secondary Education, for our transportation formula depreciates buses over eight years to calculate the reverse. These buses have really good warranties on them, three-year, fifty-thousand-mile bumper to bumper, five-year, one-hundred-thousand-mile powertrain warranty, and an eight-year, one-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-mile four, two-hundred-thousand kilowatt-hour warranty on battery tanks. And just, if this were to be a question, I don't know how much we would, how much we would be using, how many kilowatt-hours we would be using a day, but it should be less based on, we're only running about thirty miles a day or less when making use of two-hundred three. Our current diesel buses have a five-year bumper to bumper warranty, just as comparison. When I submitted this on Friday, that we were estimating about three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars per bus, including air conditioning, we got the quote just this morning, and it's more like three-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars per bus. And I'll go through these numbers, I apologize that I wasn't able to get them to the board. So for twenty-four new buses, it'd be a little over ninety-point-four million dollars. The amount that they would save us for our twenty-four diesels at thirty-five thousand each would be eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, reducing the. reducing the grant amount. But Amarin to supply the meters could be $80,000 to $100,000. A company that supplies the chargers would be about $425,000. Installing the meters and the junction boxes, about $400,000 and some administrative costs. So the grant request would be about $9.5 to $9.6 million dollars in total. Which is why I said if we have to pay out-of-pocket $30,000 or $50,000, it's a very miniscule amount compared to $9.5 or $9.6 million to replace all 20, to replace all of our 24 route buses and get air conditioning on that also. So advantages to the EV is a decrease of maintenance items. We don't have to, we don't have to do oil changes. And we don't have to use DEF, which is diesel exhaust fluid. Both of those would be a cost savings. Obviously, an electric bus is a quiet operation. We have air conditioning included. The operating cost would be greatly reduced. The cost of electricity is very cheap compared to the cost of diesel. Obviously, it would be healthier for students and drivers with 0% emissions. There is the possible environmental, possible, possible positive environmental impact depending on, you know, all of the arguments on how the electric is generated. So that's why I feel possible. We would get new replacement buses sooner than planned. So again, they depreciate over eight years. This is our seventh year of our buses. So we would start planning on replacing three or four each year, starting next year or the year after. And what we were thinking about were gas buses instead of diesel because since we don't put the miles on it, we don't need to use a diesel, a diesel engine that, that can last longer than a gas engine. So gas engine with air conditioning right now is about $135,000. That is compared to around $75,000 or $78,000 when we bought these diesel buses back in 2018. But if we replaced three to four a year, it'd be $400,000 to $540,000 a year at the current cost of $135,000. There is a possible battery recycling program in the future that's not currently going, but EV buses are very new. And the other problem with gas or diesel engines is the emission standards constantly are increasing. And the cost of diesel and gas buses are expected to approach the cost of an EV in the future, according to the industry. We won't know that 10 to 15 years from now, we won't know that. But you can see that the diesel and the gas have gone up substantially from when we got our buses seven years ago. And if EV technology follows most other technology, the price will bend that. So this advantage to the EV is a future liability to the district. This is probably my biggest concern about replacing 24 EV buses at a very high cost. Again, $392,000 right now, not $370,000. Again, when, last week, we weren't sure we could get 24 charging stations. Not that we need them. We don't need to charge every bus every day. But it would be a logistical issue about getting buses in the right stalls for charging overnight. Again, the battery life is unknown. It could be 15 years. That's what they're telling us. That would be the same as the life of the bus, but it could be lower. And the current cost of a battery pack per the bus is $100,000 if they don't last 15 years. They've also told us that the range of the buses will decrease. It's 130 miles now, but it will decrease as the batteries get old because you use rechargeable cell in your cellphone or anything else, you know that eventually the, the charging power is aged. And the other thing that is a concern is that the rare earth elements that they use in these lithium and whatever they are, batteries, you know, most of them come from overseas. So they could be exhausted in 15 years. I don't know what the, I don't know what the supply is in the, in our earth. Or unavailable if, if politically we have a terms with those countries that have rare earths. Again, those are just items that we, we can consider. Really, tonight, again, the deadline is August 27th. Really, we're just looking for consensus that the board wants to move forward with the application for the grant. It's not guaranteed. And once we get five numbers and the grant's awarded, if we do get one, we don't have to accept it. We are not committing to anything other than I don't want these partners that have worked with us to do some work if we're not interested. Brian, do you have anything to say yet? We asked Brian to come today in the interest of time. He said that the PowerPoint is, you know, trying, anything he's interested in or excited about, sometimes gravity is not his strength.
I think this is great. This, this could be a giant step forward for our community. As Brian and I talked before, our community is very compact. You can drive from one end to the other in very little time. So if, if there's a school district here in the county or in the state that is well-equipped to be converted to electric buses, we're it. I mean, 30 miles a day, that's, that's how far some people drive to get the work.
And I wanted to mention Brian was instrumental in this. He's the one that worked with Midwest Bus Sales. He developed this program to me and Dr. Phil.
So, so the board supports this, if we end up getting the grant moving ahead, it would be the one district in Missouri that would have a full electric fleet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's our fault.
Sorry.
That's our fault.
Oh, as far as routes are concerned, all of our routes will be electric.
So quick question, well, statement and question. First of all, I would not worry about, you know, like what happens after 15 years? Because if after 15 years, you know, the elements are not available to us or things change or the price increases, guess what? We're going to have to start replacing buses anyway. We would have to do it, you know, you're kind of saving us five years as it, you know, if you look at it. So if we wanted to, we could go back, you know, to whatever is in 15 years. Because I'm not even going to say anything because it could be something totally different. So just saying, I would not consider that a disadvantage because we don't know, we don't know what's going to happen in five years, you know, the way technology mid-range changed. So that to me.
My concern would be more of once you get something out of your budget, target it again. Or because other priorities take over. I'm just saying.
Yes, but I mean, if we had to, we could go back to, let's say, gas buses.
Oh, absolutely. And I don't know what they would cost at that point.
Right. One question I do have about cost is insurance-wise. So is there a difference in our insurance of covering these buses?
I did not ask music, but they, they have never, they only charge a flat rate per bus for any district, no matter what kind of bus you had or what kind of train or anything else. So I would assume no, but I did not check.
The only reason I'd ask is because these are obviously more expensive than a regular bus. So like if one would, you know, get into an accident or something, is it more to repair that compared to this? And so would our insurance?
I don't know. If, if we had, if we get the grant awarded, we'll check before we accept it.
Okay.
This is very exciting. My thing is, is our fleet is already aging. Because I know that you were already talking about, you know, building an area so that we could repair all the buses. So we know that we're getting to that point where the buses are going to be needing repair. One question I have is, on average per month, how much does it cost for the field that we are having to pay? Do you know off the top of your heads for that?
Per week, so I would say about $12,000 per month because we're doing about $25,000 to $3,000, we'll remember in full session.
Okay, because also, is it any different? Will drivers, will it be a challenge for them to retrain? For them to learn how to drive the EVs? Because I know that that would have to be a question. I want to make sure that they feel comfortable with the change. And then also, is there a way that we could have solar power that we could have instead of necessarily relying on the electric company for that, if that's a possibility?
That's possible. I would, I would want to look into a grant for that. Although the current roof at the Husky Support Center would not be a good, the way it is right now would not be a good roof to put solar panels on. We're also talking about if we charge overnight, the rate would be less than, it's not going to be a high demand time. So we're not, you know, we're going to save so much on electric versus diesel. We haven't thought about the solar part yet, but there will be grants. Yes.
Because I've been even looking at Tesla's and how that works. It's very interesting. They even have tiles that are like solar panels that they can switch over to. But what's also nice is, is that you don't have to worry about the noise of the refueling because I know that that has always been kind of an issue. So you completely eliminated that.
Have you been to the out-of-work in Illinois? They have a parking garage that, it's not really a garage, but the roof, it's, cars drive under it and it's all solar panels. And it's a pipe dream of mine, but.
I was just going to say.
Yeah. We could, we could build, put solar panels over. If you go to Patnill School District, they put their buses under a, have a carport kind of thing. And then the roof could be a carport that, so we could build the panels right above the buses where they sit now. And those panels would be an power theoretically to charge the buses.
I'm looking down still back to the electric company.
And that was, yeah, board members, you remember during the prior Democratic administration, there were significant incentives to put solar panels on schools. So we really took advantage of that. So it might make sense to wait until those would come around again for those solar incentives. And then work.
Just putting it there, so that's always an option. Because I think that this is a wonderful opportunity. I think it should be something that you really work on now so that you can get your foot in the door for that. Because that would be pretty exciting to have those electric buses. But like I said, I want to make sure that the people that are driving those cars, it's going to be.
Address the training question.
So the drivers really would get a throttle, it's a gas pedal, call it, yes, but a gas pedal in the vehicle. Press the button to turn the bus on. It's not like starting an engine though. It just, the electric comes on. And when you press the gas, it goes. And the difference between is you can set it in a lower and then when you let off, the actual electric motor of the bus becomes the brake system. And while it's braking, it actually recharges the batteries at the same time. So I went for a test drive with the Amarin UTE representative that came out to our place. And in his electric car, he showed me how in that lower mode, in our small areas, when I go on the highway or anything like that, it takes about one kilowatt hour of energy when you're going. And when you let off the throttle to brake, it gives that three kilowatt hours. So it's actually charging more than it's using. Now, it's a small car. It's different than a bus, but just to give you an idea. The driver, he has to get used to the fact that he's not having to brake pedal. But in regular mode, it's not necessarily charging as much, but they can just use the brake pedal to brake and the gas pedal to go. And it's really very little difference except that with electric, it's not, you know, with gas or whatever, it's mixing the fuels together and it takes, it's got a little bit of, whereas if you're pulling away from stuff, then you're pulling away. You just have to use that.
It's a different certification also that drivers must have for the brakes. Is that correct?
They, they only make them with air brakes. And so our drivers would have to have air brakes, or air brake endorsement on their, on their license. I have two that don't. All of us are, and I have it myself. So, yeah, I do not have air brakes for it.
Have you talked to any other schools or people that have used the buses?
Electric buses? I have not. I, I, you know, they, they sent me names of the buses of the, of the business. And in case I wasn't sure, I would still want to do it. I already did this, so I probably should.
I need to.
We can talk to people, you know, if we're awarded because District Island actually has some electric buses. So I know people there that we can talk to. And the beauty is, is there's a substation right across the street, right across Midland from the Husky Support Center. So for all of those reasons, I think that's why Midwest reached out to Brian and began. We've also get points because of our lower-income area, as well as what's the other one?
We're close to the airports of pollution. We have points for being in a, it was an environmental.
Sensitive area.
Environmentally sensitive area because we are supposed to be at the, the law schools and planes and highways. So we got all kinds of things.
But we have everything going for us.
That's awesome.
I'm ready.
All right.
Thank you.
Some more questions? We'd be coming back to you in November.
November.
One way or another, either we get it or we don't. And then that point, we would then need to, we'd be looking for approval if we get the grant.
Excellent.
Well, I'm not sure that they, November, so it could be December.
As long as we get the grant, it doesn't matter.
You will want to three point zero eight personal recommendations on the item ten.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
I'm here to present, this is how I've been wanting for sure before. I'm hoping to get some of your comments in my head.
Paul Pan, do you know if we have any coaches working for us that are not employees? And I mean, like full-time employees.
Typically do. Can I draw on how many that we represent typically do?
About a little down.
Seems to be slightly, we find that we do have changes year to year with coaching. We do have that double set because they are out with us.
And those openings are on our website as well.
Dr. Lachance, I'm very glad to see that we have an increase in like the channel changes when people get their masters and up. Have you seen an increase over the last couple of years to see if people are kind of still following that route? Because I think that's always.
I think they're definitely following that route. And that's something that honestly, people express interest in when we were talking about that offer. And that is one of the selling points. People are interested in these channel changes and they often talk to you about their plans and changes at the point they get hired. And they're often talking about, well, working on a master degree. And we talk about the process that involves the channel change. I believe it does. I don't know that I have enough, that I track it enough to show that there's an increase, but I know that there is continual interest.
I just think that's one of the coolest things in education in general, does they have that opportunity?
Absolutely.
As I say, if you look at number one, I'm like, yeah.
I do want to ask about 27 and 28. I see what their assignment is. Is that happening in other schools or only in those two schools?
Oh, that is happening in the other schools. I believe when I talked to Charles about that, I was investigating that specific that happens in all of our elementary schools.
Okay.
And I believe Pearl just hasn't heard from all of them.
Okay.
And some of them, I believe, were on June for approval.
Okay.
He typically wants to confirm with them and then on report.
Okay, thank you.
That's the morning program.
Yep, yeah. Anybody else have any questions or make a motion?
Madam President, I believe that we accept recommendations. I want to.
She likes to make a motion.
Never mind.
I'd like to make a motion with 1, 3, 4. Personal recommendations presented.
We'll let you second.
I'll second that. You guys just have way too much fun.
Dr. Albert Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Enrique Sembalo?
Yes.
All right, and I will vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
We will move on to 3.09. Board member comments?
I actually have an odd question that's to do with us in the board, but speaking of our buses and everything else, has anybody heard of an update about Midland? I mean, I see that they're working more, but do we have an end in sight?
I've not heard of things. Jennifer Dwight, have you heard anything about Midland?
I have.
You have?
Yes. I called specifically about the sidewalk in front of Mary. Because no traffic backs up onto Midland by Mary. They said that that will not be an issue when school starts. But they are going to continue working along Midland. But I was specifically looking at how it would affect the school. So, by the start of school, they're going to have that sidewalk completed. They actually made it a six-inch concrete sidewalk, instead of a four-inch, because the traffic actually falls up onto the sidewalk quite quick.
Yeah.
That will affect school, from what I was told from what I've heard about.
And I know, in terms of my office, this is gonna be a real issue. Because I have spoken to the engineers, and I do have their member, that they're supposed to be starting work in front of my office in 2024. So I'd like to say that there's something inside, but it's gonna be a hot minute.
You're killing our buses.
I did want to share, one of the students graduated tonight. She was really giving praise to the district and the staff in the district. She specifically said that she was very thankful to be a part of a district that supported the students and created an environment of second chances. So I wanted to just say thank you to each and every one of you for the work that you do to support our students, no matter where they are, and keep them where they're at, so that they can go on to become successful graduates of our district. So, just know that one of your graduates tonight is very appreciative, and was singing high praises of all of the support that she has received during the timeframe in the district. Let's just hear that.
Thank you.
Guys, as we start our school year, and as we talk about our students and our staff and everything, it's, it's great to note some of the relationships that we have with the organizations that we work with. And I won't put our teacher out here on the spot, tell her that her, our NEA group is just a wonderful group to work with. The leadership that is in place right now is, is balancing their duties as far as representing their constituents, but also representing the needs of our students. And it makes for a great partnership. It has been mentioned on social media and other places, that we work well together, where some school district is very adversarial. And, but right now, we're enjoying a very good relationship with the, with this team. And I'm really, really thankful for our, for our leadership and the RNEA.
I'll break the rules and say thank you.
You can do whatever you want. It's, it's just wonderful that you can have conversations of more than just banging each other's heads and saying what we should have and what we should do and everything.
It gives me hope. We can do it here, and other people can do it other places. You know, it, it can happen. We're family. We fight sometimes, but we figure that.
So thank you to you and the team.
We will move on to 3.10. Treasures Report. Mr. White, members?
And just go to the last page. I'll just go through the summary. You can see that we've made just a few adjustments, decreasing some operating expenditures so far. Still budgeting operating surplus of almost $2.3 million. And no changes to the debt service fund or bond issues at this point. And I'll be able to answer your questions.
I just had a few. And that's, I asked, I asked for this to be pulled out from the consent agenda, because I think it's, it's good that we also know about our, our budget and how things work, and see the numbers and things like that. One question I had, I know it's here somewhere, but I'm not, I don't do this. We have bond issues, we have bonds out. What is our total amount that we have out that we're obligated to pay?
So right now, we issued the first, so we, the board has authorized $19.5 million. We issued half of those back in 2020, so $9.75 million. And then it had a little premium on it, so it's probably a little over $10 million. And then, if you look at, under the bond issue fund, I have cost revenues of $9,950,000. So we anticipate issuing the other half of those, another $9.75 million, probably in December, as well as refunding some old ones. And then there's a couple hundred thousand in there for interest earnings. So, again, we'll have probably close to $20 million in total bond issue funds, dispensed over the life of this bond issue.
Okay, but we've issued bonds...
$9.75.
Oh, yes.
Previous. Yes. Oh, how much do we have on state?
Yeah, what is, what is...
I'm sorry, I don't have that. I don't have that with me. So that doesn't show up on the treasures report. That's a, that's total debt. But this is strictly shows revenues and expenditures. So, I can get that for you. Yeah, I want to take that. Yes.
Okay. And it's, it shows on the, on the first page, county sources.
Yes.
And under 5111, fines, forfeitures, and such.
Yes.
The $75,000, is that, is that what we have gained from people?
So fines, forfeitures, and the sheets, it's a weird revenue. It, it comes in from several sources, and it's very hard to predict what we're gonna get. So I budgeted $50,000, and it's usually about that amount we usually budget historically. We got a payment in July 28th of $75,580, so... So it's, it's several sources, and I can't even tell you exactly what it is. So it's, it's something that like, we only get one payment a year. It's something the county collects. Fines, forfeitures, and the sheets. I don't even, honestly, Dr. Thomas, I don't even know what a sheets are. So, it's something the county collects, and they give it to us. And that's, it's not a...
Where did it come from? Like, what, what was...
I have to ask the county what it is, because again, it's a, it's an immaterial amount that we budgeted. When it comes in, it's great. It's not something we really count, I mean, we count them on about $50,000 a year. And I can't tell you what it's, I'm sorry. But I will find out.
Under federal sources, we've talked a lot about SIR3 funds, but if I read this right, right now, it says zero?
So I just haven't budgeted, we haven't budgeted the expenditures, the projects that we're doing for SIR3, nor the revenue, because they'll be awash. So right now, I've just budgeted $2 million in SIR2. So all of these things that, so SIR2, we, we got some last year, didn't request it all, and we have to request that by September 30th for SIR2, and we will.
Okay, so this says SIR2 is $7,000?
$7 million, yes.
So that's the total amount that we give from SIR2?
SIR2, yes. We've already received almost $3 million. We have about, almost $10 million allocated to us. And then SIR3 is almost $15 million. But I have a budget, the expenditure, so I did my budget.
So what would then be the total between SIR2 and 3 that we have allocated to any projects?
SIR2 we've allocated, we just haven't received the revenue.
So all of that is allocated to something?
Yes. It's mostly allocated to benefits. That, that will be, will be given reimbursed. SIR3 is about the $15 million that we have, that we have budgeted the expenditure. So, market panels, other projects that we talked about last week, and the other things that we, that we've talked about that we were gonna do with SIR3 funds, some are...
Windows, things like that.
Yes.
They would come from...
Chillers.
They all come from SIR3 funds?
Correct. Yes.
And I, I look at these numbers, and there's one number I, it's on page 4, subtotal bond issue fund that has
So that's the total of all funds. Bond issue is for $9,950,000. Total all funds, that, looks like that should be up online to actual total all funds, but that's the $102 million. So that's all, the three operating funds, general, teachers, and caper projects, and then also debt service fund and the bond issue fund. So all of them combined is $102,000.
I might start to understand this stuff. Thank you very much. Well, President, those, all the questions I had.
I did have one clarification question. We're talking about SIR funds. We are now in the clear where the federal government is no longer potentially threatening to take away some of those funds?
We have not heard any more from that. Correct.
The danger in that, though, is that that, that came up very, very quickly. The idea of clawing back unspent, that was in the span of about two weeks. That was a possibility. Is that correct, Dwight?
Yeah. And there are resets right now. So when they do get back, the biggest thing is about funding the government through past September 30th. So I would assume they won't do anything before September 30th. And you have to get both houses, which I think is not, not likely.
Hadn't heard anything, so...
Not sure. Right, so sometimes not hearing anything is good.
I'd like to motion to approve the Treasures Report as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Enrique Sembalo?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Albert Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Segard?
Yes.
Mrs. Malas?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We will move on to consent agenda items. So we're looking for a motion? Looking for consent agenda items.
There's a lot.
Yes.
I like it.
1 through 13. Make the motion to approve consent agenda items, 4.01 through 4.13 as recommended. Second. Mrs. Enrique Sembalo? Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Albert Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Segard?
Yes.
Mrs. Malas?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Madam President, this might be strange to say at this point, but I hope we adjourn.
Mrs. Loos?
Yes.
Mrs. Segard?
Yes.
Dr. Albert Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Enrique Sembalo?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you, board members.